I didn't hear that.
That's why I run down the time clock.
All right, you're right.
He's lucky.
Call this meeting of the common council to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman, Byer. Here. Peachey?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Lars?
Here.
Tully?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
Horn?
Here.
Brandl.
President Brandl is excused this evening. At this time, we'll entertain public participation. Anyone who would like to address the council may do so. We ask that you please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. There will be a public hearing this evening that will have an opportunity for people wishing to be heard about the redevelopment of the former Jefferson County Highway Shop. But if there's anyone that wishes to address the council on any other issue, we would invite you to do so. Seeing none. Next, I'm going to move on to a mayoral proclamation. It's my privilege to read this in support of the City of Jefferson National Night Out, which is this evening, going on at Riverfront Park. From now until 8:30, there will be many displays there, so if you would like to after you leave here, please stop by and show your support there. There will also be a brief fireworks show at about dusk. City of Jefferson Proclamation, National Night Out 2019. Whereas, the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 6, 2019, entitled National Night Out. And whereas, the 36th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the City of Jefferson to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas, the City of Jefferson citizens play a vital role in assisting the City of Jefferson Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the City of Jefferson and is supporting National Night Out 2019 locally. And whereas, it is essential that all citizens of the City of Jefferson be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the City of Jefferson. And whereas, police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I, City of Jefferson Mayor Dale Opperman, do hereby call upon all citizens of the City of Jefferson to join the City of Jefferson Police Department, the National Association of Town Watch, of which we are a member, in supporting the 36th Annual National Night Out on August 6, 2019. Further, let it be resolved that I, City of Jefferson Mayor Dale Opperman, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6, 2019, as National Night Out in the City of Jefferson. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dale, for coming tonight and for all the work that you and all the sworn officers as well as Chief Palagi do for the City of Jefferson. It's a great event, and I think kudos to your staff for putting it on again this year and organizing it so well.
Thank you.
So, thanks for coming.
If anyone needs anything else from me, I'm going to get back down here, but invite everybody to come down if you want. Enjoy the night. See you later.
Okay. Thank you, Captain.
Going to the donkey next? Nope. I can't do that. I'm working.
Next, we'll move on to an appointment by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. I'm proposing the name of Joe Peters for the Jefferson Utility Commission. Joe has a, is retired, but has an extensive history working in the electric industry for various entities. So, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Lars, seconded by Mrs. Byer. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, to move on to a discussion on the development of 200 Pittsner Parkway, I'd like to welcome Eric Fritz from Kiva Entertainment Group. Did I get that right?
Kiva Sports.
Sports. I'm sorry.
That's close.
No, let's get it right for the paper. Papers. So, welcome, Eric, and...
Eric, why don't you grab that microphone and just bring it in front of you and then...
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
Yep.
Just press that button.
Just press that button. You'll see a little green light. You're live.
I'm live. All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for having me this evening. We continue to push forward. As I think you know, we have the property under contract. We have certain contingencies that were in line to meet, so we're working on those. We are continuing to work with the contractors. We're running into higher costs than what we had expected, but we're continuing to work with them and trying to make sure that things are precise or more precise, so those numbers ring true. I would say that, I would, I continue to say that we are cautiously optimistic. We are excited, but we are cautiously optimistic. We would like to continue to go down that path. So, I want to continue to say that. We have a few of the renderings here that are off to our side. You can take a look there. The, we, the, clearly, the building is going to stay pretty much the same. We are going to add the outdoor space with volleyball courts in a field, food and beverage. So, we've got a lot, a lot going on there, but this is something that we've been doing now for 20 years, and we continue to see that, much of that same operation that we have working here as well. Are there, are there questions?
Sure. I could, I comment a little bit for Eric on this as far as the status of this with the city. Kiva has submitted a site plan to the Plan Commission that has been approved along with the conditional use for the, for the facility. For those that are not familiar, what we're referring to is the, the building out on 200 Pittsner Parkway, the former Excel Building. The, the plans have been accepted by the city, and as indicated, the conditional use is approved for Kiva on this. Right now, I believe they're just going through some of their state approvals at this point. We have some staff review that will be working with Eric and his builder on locally, but essentially, they have met all their requirements with the city as far as any meetings that would be required at this point. Tim, if you want to comment on anything else that we're going to be going through here?
I think really the, the last step in our local approval process is we need to finalize a development agreement. So, generally, we'd like to think that could be a topic on your August 20 business meeting, but whether we get that far, I'm not really sure, but I think as Bill suggested, the zoning is right. They have a conditional use permit, and they, they really needed to do that because they had a little change in plan from the original conditional use permit that the Plan Commission approved several years ago. That's a site plan. Eric, you might just point out your, your outdoor activities, because the, the old conditional use really didn't anticipate in that first phase kind of anything happening outside other than stormwater management and parking, so...
So, so here's the, the original building. Right here, we made minor adjustments inside, and we've really tightened some things up. We will go with a open field. We hopes that, in hopes that that'll help work with baseball and other field-type sporting sports activities. The outdoor field that Tim alluded to is right here. So, that's to the north of the building, and then our volleyball, two volleyball, and food and beverage, an area to sit around and watch, watch the games as a part of the project as well.
And is it a multi-purpose field or a soccer field?
It's multi-purpose. We really didn't draw all the lines in. We'll, we'll get to that when they determine whose different uses. But it's really, it's going to be an open field, so it's not just going to be for sports, but in terms of other events that are going, collaborations with different organizations that can use space.
Excellent.
Any other questions about that?
Do council members have any questions?
Okay. Okay. I, I, you know, I know that, like you mentioned, we are working with the state. I wish I could remember the date, the finalized date. I know that's coming up, I think, in about two weeks here, but, so it's on the right track.
So, I think, you know, probably the last thing that lands in front of you is that developer's agreement when it's, when it's ready, and I guess...
Correct.
I think you'd probably say we should try to shoot for the 20th, but we'll, we'll see if we can get there, because hard for you to start the building until you can close, wait your contingencies and close, and sooner is better for you...
Absolutely.
...for your programming, so... I, I would imagine that there is maybe three months to complete the building?
It should, it should take about three months. We're looking, optimistically, we're looking at December 1st as being able to open. But again, there's contingencies along the way, like the developer's agreement. If, if we have a difficult time with that, then the date would be, we would start in May, mid-May, that kind of thing, to be open for the fall of 2020. But we are working diligently toward a December 1st opening.
In general, you're anticipating this to operate similar to your current facility over in Middleton, correct?
Yeah, yes, there is. And like, within any community, there's nuances. And whereas, we don't do a lot with baseball in Middleton, we know that this is an area that baseball is quite prevalent, so that we, we will be working with organizations that would like to work with us. Absolutely. And there's, there's going to be the opportunities of working with Park and Rec. What kind of things can we curate? What can we develop? Other organizations within the community. So, we're going to keep an open mind. It's what we do, but we also keep an open mind.
Well, if we can get it to the finish line, it's a nice improvement. It's been in that condition for a couple of years now, so...
Sure. Right. We will continue to work towards that.
Sounds good.
Great.
Sounds good. Thanks for the update, Eric.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Eric. Have a good night.
Next, we'll adjourn to a public hearing on a proposed amendment to Section 17.04 Parent 2B of the Municipal Code of the City of Jefferson related to the rezoning of 631 North Watertown Avenue, formerly known as the Jefferson County Highway Shop. We'll call this public hearing to order and ask City Administrator Freytag to read the notice of public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the common council of the City of Jefferson will hold a public hearing in the council chambers of the Jefferson City Hall, 317 South Main Street, Jefferson, Wisconsin, on 6 August 2019 at 7:00 PM to hear a rezone request for a 19-acre piece of property located at 631 North Watertown Avenue. This property is formerly known as the Jefferson County Highway Shop, and the rezoning is from ML, which is a limited industrial district, to a proposed zoning designation of MU, which is a mixed-use district. The notice was published in the Daily Union on July 30, 2019, and again on August 1, 2019. All interested persons are current, are encouraged to attend and submit oral or written comments.
Thank you. I will ask Director of Public Works, City Engineer Bill Pinnell, for an explanation of the zoning change request.
Thank you. As Administrator Freytag indicated, this is going from a limited industrial to a mixed-use zoning. The mixed residential business and industrial district is intended to provide a number of uses deemed appropriate in areas of historical significance with existing buildings or otherwise unique characteristics. These include residential business and industrial uses. The district is intended to be used for larger areas which require careful advanced planning and coordination to ensure the proper execution of development plans. The mixed-use zoning also gives a developer the greatest flexibility in redeveloping these larger parcels, and the city the greatest control over the design of the development and the image it creates within the city.
Thank you.
One, one thing, Dale, that I would say before you open the public hearing that really is important to say, that's the property on the, the two television screens. The mixed use really allows the redevelopment of that property to occur in really two fashions. One would be for residential development, and that could be multifamily condominium, market rate, could be single-family homes. But you can also combine that with retail and commercial. There, there's no industrial development that's going to occur on that site up there. You know, for years, the, the County Highway Shop needed that industrial zoning to be able to operate, but they, of course, have relocated, so mixed use really allows for a mixing of residential with retail and commercial. I would generally say that additional local approvals someday will be needed out on that property. You'll notice the green shaded area, that's Rock River Landing Park, which we hope is a joint city-county park. That is in the final stages of design engineering. We hope to bid that soon, and that's to reintroduce public access to the waterfront portion of the former County Highway Shop. And most of that property is in the floodplain. It's tough to really redevelop that. That will need a conditional use should the rezoning occur tonight at some point in the future. That requires another public hearing. My guess is that would occur shortly. The gray shaded property, that's all future development, and right now, Ben Waymeyer, County Administrator, is here. He might want to weigh in, but that property isn't under contract. The county owns it. The hope or the goal is to encourage a developer to come forward with a development plan at some point in the future that's good for the city. That has not happened, other than I know there's conversations, but whenever a development plan is developed for the rest of that property, more likely than not, that would require the city to issue a planned unit development approval, and that also requires a, a public hearing. So, I, I think I simply just wanted to say is that whether we're talking about the park or the development of that gray shaded area, there are other local approvals, other public input opportunities that will have to happen at some point in the future.
County Administrator Waymeyer, do you have anything that you'd like to add or with regard to the description of the property and the proposed use going forward?
I think Tim covered a good chunk of where we're at today. This is the first phase of many, many businesses coming forward. On the other big part that's been coming forward in front of the Plan Commission, sort of, this is CSM. We have multiple pins that were incorporated over numerous years, that property, so really getting it prepared for where to park it. The park's going to be potential for, for, for retail use over here, and obviously, this area, you're more than private use, so we're looking at developing potentially other. We're looking forward to the partnership, looking forward for an opportunity to have more public access back in the waterfront, and looking forward to getting the property back in the water.
Great. Thank you, Ben. At this time, we'll open it up for a public comment. Any persons wishing to be heard, please come to the podium and state your name and address and, and reason for appearing. Anyone care to offer any input? Anyone? Okay. We'll close the public hearing and move on to Proposed Ordinance Number 4-19, an ordinance to amend Section 300-19B of the Municipal Code of the City of Jefferson related to rezoning. Alderman Miller, would you please read that?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. City of Jefferson Propose Ordinance Number 4-19. The common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, do ordains as follows. Section 1, Section 300-19B of the zoning map, City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, which is herein made apart, is amended to change district boundaries of a 19-acre parcel, 631 North Watertown Avenue, property formerly known as Jefferson County Highway Shop, from ML Limited Industrial District to the zoning designation of MU Mixed Use District. Parcel numbers are 241-0614-0231-015 through 241-0614-0224-015. Address is 631 North Watertown Avenue, property formerly known as Jefferson County Highway Shop. Proposed permanent zoning designation, MU Mixed Use District. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force after passage and publication as provided by law and notification and attestation of the district boundary changes incorporated herein the zoning map, City of Jefferson. I so move.
It's been moved, sir, second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Kraus. In discussion? You had a pretty thorough explanation of the, the goal here and the appropriateness of the zoning district. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I think this is a good use of the lineup and something that we're working towards.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. All in favor of approval of Proposed Ordinance Number 4-19, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name. Know if you're opposed.
Alderman Peachey.
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, folks. Proposed Ordinance Number 5-19, an ordinance to repeal and recreate Section 120-1 of the Municipal Code concerning portions of the Building Construction Code. Alderman Kraus, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, citizens of Jefferson, and fellow council members. City of Jefferson, Ordinance 5-19. The common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, hereby ordains as follows. Section 1, State Statute 120-1 Parent, Parent I Building Code. The provisions of Section 120.1 Parent I of the Municipal Code are hereby repealed in its entirety. The following provisions of the Wisconsin Administrative Code are adopted by reference and made a part of this chapter. Wisconsin Commercial Building Code, the Wisconsin Commercial Building Code, Wisconsin Administrative Code, SPS 362-366, and SPS 305, and all amendments adopted thereto shall apply to all public buildings and places of employment, and is hereby adopted by reference as is fully set forth herein. Where there is a conflict between a general requirement and a specific requirement, the specific requirement shall be applicable. In a specific case, different sections of this code specify different materials, methods of construction, or other requirements the most restrictive shall govern. Two, the following provision, provisions of the Wisconsin Administrative Code are adopted by reference and made part of this chapter. Wisconsin Uniform Dwelling Code. The provisions of Chapters SPS 305 and Chapters SPS 320 to 325, Wisconsin Administrative Code, and this chapter shall apply to construction inspection procedures used for all new and existing one or two-family dwellings, manufactured building for dwelling, and newly constructed community-based residential facilities, providing care, treatment, and services for three to eight adults. State building permit seals will not be required for permits for one- and two-family dwellings built before June 1, 1980. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect after the passage, publication, and attestation as required by law. I would so move.
It's been moved, sir, second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Tully. In discussion?
All we're, all we're doing here is adopting changes to the Wisconsin Commercial Building Code and the Wisconsin Uniform Dwelling Code, so we're in line with them. This is something the state has, has asked us to do, and we're doing it.
Okay. Any questions of Chris or comments? Seeing none. All in favor of Proposed Ordinance Number 5-19, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name. Know if you're opposed.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Proposed Ordinance Number 6-19, rather, an ordinance to amend Section 300-19B of the Municipal Code of the City of Jefferson related to rezoning of the 345 to 347 East Racine Street, Jefferson. For a first reading, Alderman Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Opperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. Again, this is a first reading. The common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, do ordain as follows. Section 1, Section 300-19B of the zoning map, City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, which is herein made apart, is amended to change district boundaries of 345 through 347 East Racine Street. Our one, single-family residential district to the zoning designation of BHN Highway and Neighborhood Business District. Description is east 49.5 feet of Lot 12, Block 3, Sanborn and Barber's Edition. Parcel number is 241-0614-0244-112. Again, the address, 345 through 347 East Racine Street. Proposed permanent zoning designation, BHN Highway Neighborhood Business District. And Section 2 of this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force after passage and publication as provided by law and notification and attestation of District Brown, due changes incorporated herein the zoning map, City of Jefferson. And that's a first reading.
Thank you, Paul.
Yep.
Just for a point of reference, this is the property of the Jefferson Cafe, and it's newly adjacent parking lot. Next, to move on to Proposed Ordinance Number 7-19, an ordinance to modify Chapter 300 of the City of Jefferson Municipal Code concerning the operation of wineries. Alderman Byer, please.
Honorable Mayor, council members and citizens, City of Jefferson Propose Ordinance 7-19. In an ordinance to modify Chapter 300 of the City of Jefferson Municipal Code concerning the operation of wineries, the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, hereby adorns, or ordains the following. Section 1, 300-30 Parent P is created to read as follows. Operation of brew pub or winery in the business, business district with a limitation that no more than 50,000 gallons of product are manufactured in a given calendar year. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect after passage, publication, and attestation as required by law. This is the first reading.
Thank you. Next, to move on to Resolution Number 28, tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 28. Be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for August 6, 2019, hereby adopted. A, we have vouchers payable for July 2019 in the amounts of $317,443.90. The payroll summary for July 19, 2019, in the amount of $175,181.69. And August 2, 2019, in the amount of $175,606.10. B, we had council minutes from July 16, 2019, of the common council. And C, we have licenses as approved by the Regulatory Committee. Operators licenses, we had two. We had Nicholas Bonilla from Playa Vallarta and Cole Radloff for Fairview Inn. We did have a Class B beer and Class C wine license, and that was also issued to Playa Vallarta Mexican Grill. And item number three, we had special Class B licenses for a wine license to go with the beer license. That'll be for the Jefferson Rotary Club Rotten Burger Dinner Raffle, which is at the Jefferson County Fairgrounds on Monday, August 12. I would so move.
It's been moved, sir, second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Lars. In discussion? Way to get the plug in there, Toby. That's pretty good.
Always.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, all in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name. Know if you're opposed.
Alderman Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, and we will be looking forward to the Rotten Burger Raffle next week. Resolution Number 29, a resolution accepting an offer to purchase for 123 West Milwaukee Street. Alderman Lars, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 29, authorizing an offer to purchase agreement of one twenty-three West Milwaukee Street, most recently known as the Rock Bottom Tavern and Restaurant, one thirty-five South Main Street, Inc., uh, current owner. And be it further resolved to the acquisition of one twenty-three West, West Milwaukee Street is the tax increment district number five project, and that, that the tax increment district number five fund will reimburse the city's general funds for any funds advanced, uh, to purchase the property from future tax increment district number five revenues, including the proceeds of the general obligation bonds issued. I so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Peachey, and discussion? What, what is the, the purchase agreement is for how much?
A hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand dollars. And it's known as the Rock Bottom Tavern Restaurant, one thirty-five South Main Street. It's different than the building address, correct?
One twenty-three West Milwaukee is the physical address, I don't know. That's the name of, uh, the corporation that actually owns the building. The physical address for the property is one twenty-three West Milwaukee Street.
Okay. Should I wait for the presentation on the redevelopment, or should I ask what the purchase is for? Yeah. Uh, there's, uh, someone interested in buying the building and, uh, redeveloping it, opening the business. So why are we buying it? Well, that would be a, a crucial part of the initiative to get it open. Because, uh, the prospective buyer is gonna need some help, uh, to get it open in operable, in an operable condition, and this would be, uh, a means of providing that support. Okay. Tim, did you have anything to add?
Yep, uh, surely. Um, so we, we've been talking about this property for a couple of meetings now. Um, I would tell you, it's, uh, a fairly historic property in the city of Jefferson. The property's on the state and, uh, National Register of Historic Places. It is the old livery building, uh, for the Jefferson House Hotel, and dates back well into the eighteen hundreds. Uh, the property's been vacant now for several years. Um, it's in, uh, a condition that requires a fairly significant investment to save the building. And quite honestly, when we first started talking about it, uh, we looked at the prospect of having to raise the structure, uh, and then, uh, potentially, uh, redeveloping the site for parking that would support activities down on the riverfront. Uh, but such, uh, such, since that time, um, we, we do have a, uh, uh, an extremely viable, uh, reuse of the building. We have a party that's interested in acquiring it from the city, assuming we close on it. That's the second or sister resolution that follows this one. Um, and that gentleman's, uh, name is Rob Lewis from Lewis Winery in Lake Mills, and, uh, he does have a, a short presentation, and maybe now's the time to do it.
Sure. Rob, welcome.
Thank you.
We're gonna incorporate your presentation into this, uh, prior to the vote on this resolution. Helps provide some clarity.
Yep.
Good. All right, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Again, it's, it's an honor and a privilege to speak before the city council and for all the citizens, uh, here in Jefferson. Um, again, my name's Rob Lewis, and I'm the winemaker and owner of Lewis Station Winery in downtown Lake Mills. I'll give you a brief history, um, and then I'll bring you up to speed with what you see on your TV screen. Uh, about ten years ago, my wife and I decided, excuse me, that we were gonna open a wine shop with the intent to eventually buy and start a winery. Happy to say it was probably nine years ago that I was sitting in front of the council, uh, the city council in Lake Mills, giving them a passionate story about how I can drive tourism into downtown Lake Mills, because at that time, there were a lot of vacancies in Lake Mills as well. I find it hard to believe now, uh, but that was the case. And my idea was to start a urban winery. Uh, in the state, there are more wineries that are typically out in the countryside where you typically find wineries with vineyards and that sort of thing. Because of that, uh, there are seasonalities, so a lot of wineries are closed in winter, and you can only visit them in the, in the couple of nice months that we actually have here in Wisconsin. Um, my idea was to have a, an urban winery that we could do more than just create wines, we could create a destination that could be enjoyed year-round, um, also providing food and entertainment and that sort of thing. At that time, again, in, in front of the, the council of Lake Mills, it was untested. It was just my passion to kinda push that project forward. Nine years now, uh, later, I'm, I'm happy to be sitting in front of you to be able to tell you that, um, of all the wineries here in the state, we're probably in the top ten percent for wine production as well as tourism. And downtown Lake Mills is full. As excited as I was about opening that winery in, in Lake Mills, being an old gas station, I knew that I had to do a unique theme to, that would be part of my market. When the opportunity came to look at the building that you have down here in Jefferson, and at the riverfront, I'm probably as excited, if not more excited, um, because the, the potential is huge, and the redevelopment that I hear from the, the city council and, uh, and residents, uh, with the restructuring of the downtown riverfront, I knew that I had to be part of that. And when the opportunity came to look at this building, again, looking at its history, I wanted to incorporate the history and allow the building to thrive. And that's where the name Stable Rock Winery came from. Stable is, you know, when it was built in the late eighteen hundreds, rock obviously next to Rock River, and winery is kind of self-explanatory for why I do. So here with my, so this would be, um, my intent. Uh, the exterior of the building, we would start working on immediately after closing. Redo the brick and the foundation repair that it desperately needs. Uh, we'd remove the paint, expose the natural beauty of the prime city brick without painting, so you would see the, the beauty of the way the building was built back in, I think, nineteen oh three, if I researched it. Um, and then something else that it, it truly needs now is, uh, a new roof and gutters. The lack of gutters on the building is causing damage every time it rains. So the idea would be to kind of button up the outside of the building this year, so that this winter, I would have confidence knowing that the building is safe on the outside, but I'm gonna have on, on the inside, so we could go to the next slide. The idea, uh, in the interiors, where we would add the production facility. Uh, we'd replace all the boarded windows that cover ninety percent of the windows. We'd replace those with actual windows, so you could actually see the, the Rock River. On the main level, that's where we would prepare, uh, the interior for the tasting room. Lower level would be used for an event venue, so that would be the basement. Uh, upper level undecided. It's huge, and I'm not sure what to do with it, and right now, my ass is like, there's no access to it, so I can just go on what I hear it looks like, which is, which is, which is okay. The offerings, on the main floor, that's where we do tours, tastings, would offer our, obviously, drinks, wines by the glass. Uh, we do meals, retail shopping, et cetera. The lower level would be a rental space for meetings, parties, live music, live theater, shows, wine education, uh, available for the community to rent, or whatever it is that the community would like to do. The exterior, uh, we'd remove the existing deck and replace with a new composite deck. Add a roof using historic-looking beams to add a rustic feel to the exterior of the building. Now, with it being sketched out, it actually looks kind of nice, but it doesn't quite look like that way in, in real life, no. Uh, three to five-year plan for the exterior would be the side of the building that faces the river to add a balcony, so that people could walk off the, uh, retail floor and maybe sit outside and enjoy a meal, a glass of wine, or a bottle of German beer and enjoy at the river. So the timeline, uh, proposed opening in late spring, early summer of twenty twenty, so this would be about nine months or so would be the ideal. Uh, at least the main floor for shopping and the tasting and, and retail. Hours of operation, very similar to what we do with Lewis Station, and that's Wednesday through Saturday, twelve to eight, Sunday, twelve to five. Feel interest in being a barn? Uh, this is more of a destination, is more of, uh, a nice place for local residents to come and enjoy some, maybe some German food and swine, or German beer. But certainly tourism is, is huge in, uh, Wisconsin. Um, winery theme would be history of the building, of course, and then with some German roots, as I mentioned. Interior will show history of the building with almost like a museum feel. You would see history of the building and photos and pretty much anything I can get my hands on and nailed to the wall would be the idea, so that people could kind of see, um, why we decided to keep this a historic building. The offerings would be doing German wines and hard ciders. Ciders, some of the wines would be produced on site, as I mentioned, would be doing a production facility. Uh, we'd also offer craft beers and German beers, and we have a pretty extensive menu of wines over at Lewis Station Winery, so I would pull probably half the menu and relabel them and move them here, which would immediately bring tourism, at least traffic, downtown because they're all very good sellers. So that, that would be a natural for, um, our winery to, or the, the Lewis Station Winery, um, to communicate to potential customers to come visit their sister winery in, at the riverfront in downtown Jefferson. German small plates, foods along with traditional winery plates, cheese, meats, all that. And of course, tours and tastings. Marketing approach would be billboards, highly tourism signs, social media, websites, tourism sites. We're involved with all of that. Website, you can look at it right now, uh, Stable Rock Winery. We have it published, but you need to know what it is in order to find it at the moment. Uh, but that will kind of give you an indication of the direction, uh, as well as even some of the menu with food and so forth that we've already started to establish. Um, of course, if you wanna follow us on Facebook, you can actually see pictures, uh, of the progress itself, probably using cameras and all kinds of things as it, as it happens. We anticipate twenty thousand visitors in this, visitors in the first year. That's not an, uh, I'm not overestimating that. We, right now, we, we enjoy fifty thousand plus, uh, in downtown Lake Mills. And again, with the sister winery being so close to downtown and moving a good portion of our product to downtown, and providing maps and incentives and everything else for customers to travel there, um, I don't foresee in twenty thousand in our first year, even if we open in spring, uh, as something that would be challenged. And I believe that's my last slide.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, or Rob?
How many do you employ in your operation over in Lake Mills?
Um, so, uh, employment in Lake Mills, we have five people, well, we have three on payroll and kitchen, um, two that are casual, part-time. Out on the retail floor, we have a total of nine.
Expect staff, staff stay over here?
Yeah, we would expect similar, um, eventually. I mean, starting next year, two or three on staff most of the time, and that would actually be existing employees that live here in Jefferson, that when we discussed what we were thinking about here, uh, at the downtown, have already decided that this is where they wanna call home. So I can understand that, so. So at least I know that, uh, you know, we'll start with some existing staff, uh, but it could be early, early on, uh, with, with twenty thousand in tourism, that we'll be heading, again, probably three or four out on the retail floor, and then as we develop the menu, um, more we'll be adding kitchen staff as well.
I think it's a great use of the building that was months from being torn down.
Thank you.
Kind of cool to see the greater vision of the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Your passion with the area of Jefferson.
He does have passion.
I do, I do. You know, as I, as I, as I said earlier, you know, when I, when I was talking to Lake Mills, I, it was untested. I just said, here's what I think we're gonna do. At least now, I know I have nine years of experience, and I've already taken the bumps and bruises, um, that I'm sure I'll still have a few, um, but I'll make smarter decisions earlier, and, uh, we'll see the success quicker.
I think you were reading my mind, because I'm actually a student of the mayor. It would be nice to have a little restaurant there instead of carrying it down. A winery is just as good.
Thank you.
Do you have a vineyard, Rob?
Um, so I, I do not have a vineyard here in Wisconsin. I have contract vineyards in California, Oregon, and Washington. And actually in Canada, just north of Niagara for our ice one, which here would be a base one too. It's open.
Any other questions, or Rob? If not, we will, uh, revert to resolution number twenty-nine and the discussion thereof. Are there any other questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, you pointed out there is a typo in the second full paragraph. Uh, that should be one twenty-three West, uh, Milwaukee Street, not Wisconsin Street.
Thank you.
Anything else? If you're not, all in favor of resolution twenty-nine, accepting to, uh, the offer to purchase for one twenty-three West Milwaukee Street, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Alderman Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Next to move on to resolution number thirty, a resolution authorizing the sale of one twenty-three West Milwaukee Street. Alderman Horn, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number thirty. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that here, herein authorizes and approves the sale of property located at one twenty-three West Milwaukee Street to Rob Lewis, or assigns per the terms of the commercial offer to purchased, entered into the, into by the city and Rob Lewis, or assigns. And be further resolved by the common council that the sale of the property located at one twenty-three West Milwaukee Street to Rob Lewis is conditioned, conditioned upon the prior sale of this property to the city of Jefferson by the current owner, one three five South Main Street Incorporated. I so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tully. Just got in there a little quicker. All right, uh, in discussion, Chris?
Yes, Rob, uh, what is the name of your corporation again that's gonna actually?
Uh, it's Burcard, B U R.
B U R. Pardon me?
It's Burcard, B U R, K A R D, Lewis, L E W I S, Properties, LLC. My wife insisted having her last name in there, so we had to.
I fully understand. Uh, but that's really the name of the.
She doesn't need to read that.
That, that's gonna be the name of the buyer, and that's what the offer to purchase actually says.
Yep.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Could you please summarize the terms of the, um, purchase?
Sure, sure. Uh, again, this, this assumes that, uh, we actually buy the property, uh, from, uh, Mr. Tate, and then, um, uh, hopefully, on, on the same day, we will be, uh, uh, selling it back to, uh, Mr. Lewis and his LLC. Uh, the, the, um, elements or provisions of that will be, we are gonna be selling it to, to him on a land contract. Uh, the term will be two years. The interest rate will be five and a half percent. The land contract would be due in that two-year time. Now, if Mr. Lewis, uh, puts in a minimum of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of improvements on the property. Now, if Mr. Lewis puts in a minimum of $130,000 worth of improvements on the property, as verified by us or a mutually agreeable third party, and then opens up a winery on the premises, the city would be contractually obligated to satisfy the land contract and give it to him free and clear of any encumbrances. There's some conditional use permits that Mr. Lewis is going to have to get. We're in the business, we're in the process of amending the zoning laws to allow this use, but we've already had the first reading on that, so that should be a problem. And you have signed the offer to purchase?
I have.
As an officer of your LLC?
I am.
Does anyone have any questions of Chris, Tim, or Rob? So this kind of goes back to your question before, Jim, about why is the city buying and reselling it? As we've seen over the past three years, there has been some, but little interest in the building. I think I'd like to thank, thanks to Jen Pennell and primarily for introducing us and talking with Rob and finding Rob as the person that has the vision and the passion and the wherewithal to take on a project like this, that that's, I think that's what we were waiting for. And this is an opportunity for both the city of Jefferson and for Rob and Michelle to expand their business here and really create a positive addition to downtown Jefferson here. So that's why the city's getting involved in this, is to help spur development. We work with the Lewises and they're able to put the kind of resources necessary into saving a building like this. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of resolution number 30, please signify by saying ayes. Sarah calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Alderman Tully.
Aye.
Crowe?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming tonight. We look forward to working together with you.
Thank you very much.
Move on to, that was probably the worst-kept secret in Jefferson. Okay, once again, thank you very much and thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Resolution number 31, a resolution authorizing John's disposal contract amendment. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City of Jefferson, resolution number 31. Whereas the city of Jefferson is contracted with John's Disposal Service, Inc., for refuse and recycling service for a term ending December 31, 2024. And whereas the city of Jefferson rates for refuse and recycling with John's Disposal Service have not increased since 2015. And whereas, in light of adverse recycling markets, John's Disposal Service has proposed an increase in residential and commercial monthly rates for 2020 and 2021 of $1.75, which is 15 cents increase for garbage, and $1.60 for recycling for residential customers, and $1.50, that is 20 cent increase for garbage, and $1.30 for recycling for its commercial customers. And whereas, the proposal involves two significant service-level increases for residential service, including changing bulk item collection from monthly collection on the second Tuesday of each month to a call-in service, as well as adding electronics to call-in bulk pickup. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson that from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2021, the rates for refuse and recycling will increase by $1.75 per month for residential customers and by $1.50 per month for commercial customers. Be it further resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson that the city administrator is authorized to sign an amended contract by and between John's Disposal Service, Inc. and the city of Jefferson for refuse and recycling collection based on the terms above with a contract term between the city of Jefferson and John's Disposal Service remaining in place until December 31, 2024. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lars. All, any questions or comments? We did discuss this in the prior committee, the whole meeting, but for those who weren't here, if we could just have a brief summary, Bill.
Sure. Nate Austin from John's Disposal Service talked to us at the, both the finance committee and the committee of the whole. Again, this is a similar proposal that they are proposing in multiple communities in their service area. As vindicated, they have not increased rates to the city since 2015. This rate is based solely or mainly on the change in consumables for their recycling costs. And what they wanted to do was propose the cost of the $1.75 or $1.50 per month for residential and commercial, but add two additional services. As you're aware, we currently have monthly bulk collection on the second Tuesday of every month. The residential contracts would still have 12 bulk months or bulk times per year, but instead of being the second Tuesday of every month, it'd be a call-in service. In addition to that, residents could use two of the bulk times per year to be able to include electronics. This increase, increase about $22 per year. Currently, to be able to dispose of an electronics item is $45 per item. Again, this would go into effect January 1, 2020, and they would lock the rates in for two years. If this is approved, we would also roll out the program to the public with the assistance of John's in order to inform the public so they're not surprised by this.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone have any questions or comments?
One is, I'm not sure if I heard correctly, but there will be bulk pickup available once a month, but do it any week of the month. It won't be just the first Tuesday of the month. Whatever day John's comes to town, you'd be able to schedule it for any week during the month?
That would be correct.
Yeah. That sounds good. I don't worry a couple times.
Any other questions or comments? The, you stated this is for a two-year through 2021?
Yes.
What is the term ending on 2024 as in the resolution?
Just because of the fact that we have an existing contract with John's extending through 2024. When we originally extended the contract, they locked the rates in through 2019. So this is an amendment to the contract. They were allowed an increase to the contract starting in 2020, and that, this is the increase that they had proposed, but I wanted everyone to know that we're still under contract with John's through 2024.
That's the other comment I was going to make, is this will be rolled out softly through late summer, fall, or whatever, and then it will take effect January 1.
That's correct.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of resolution number 31, please signify by saying ayes. Sarah calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Alderman Crowe?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution number 32, a resolution authorizing the public participation for the comprehensive plan. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. City of Jefferson, resolution number 32. Whereas the city of Jefferson on November 18, 2008, adopted the City of Jefferson Comprehensive Plan under the authority of and procedures established by State Statute 66.1001 parent 4 Wisconsin statutes. And whereas that comprehensive plan document advises both the regular plan commission review of the comprehensive plan as well as the ability to respond to unique circumstances which arise in relation to the comprehensive plan, which are distinct from the regular plan review process, and to enable the city's consideration of potential amendments and updates where the plan becomes irrelevant or contradictory to emerging policy or trends. And whereas State Statute 66.1001 parent 4 parent A Wisconsin statutes requires that the governing body of the local governmental unit adopt written procedures designed to foster public participation at every stage of the comprehensive plan preparation or update process, and that such written procedures shall provide for wide distribution of draft plan materials, an opportunity for the public to submit written comments on the plan materials, and a process for the governing body to respond to such comments. And whereas the city of Jefferson believes that the meaningful public involvement in process designated to consider and update comprehensive plan is important, to assure that the resulting plan meets the wishes and expectations of the public. And whereas the attached public participation strategy and procedures for the city of Jefferson Comprehensive Plan Update includes procedures to foster public participation, ensure distribution of draft plan materials, provide opportunities for written comments on such materials, and provide mechanism to respond to such comments. Whereas, at a duly noticed public meeting held on July 24, 2019, the city of Jefferson Plan Commission adopted resolution 2019-1 recommending that the Jefferson City Council adopt the attached public participation strategy and procedures for the city of Jefferson's comprehensive plan update as its public participation procedures for updating the city's comprehensive plan. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Jefferson, that the city council of the city of Jefferson hereby adopts the procedures included in the public participation strategy and procedures, the city of Jefferson Comprehensive Plan Update as its public participation procedures for periodic amendments to the city's comprehensive plan meeting the requirements of State Statute 66.1001 parent 4 parent A Wisconsin statutes. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Peachey. And discussion? Tim, you want to give us the Reader's Digest version of why we're doing this, please?
The real Reader's Digest version is statutorily, no question about it, you got to do this. It's a statutory requirement before you put a new comprehensive plan in place. The Plan Commission considered our plan, made its affirmative recommendation to you at their last meeting. I think Sarah provided you with a written copy of the plan. It's a two-page document essentially, but it talks about what we will do to further public participation as part of our comprehensive plan development process.
Any questions of Tim?
Are you on the Plan Commission?
No.
Was there any public participation on July 24 at Plan Commission?
No, there was no. As a follow-up to that, Tim, can you explain how the public can be participate in this process?
Sure.
Throughout the process?
Yep, absolutely. When we did our current plan, when we developed it 10 years or a little more than 10 years ago, I think there was a great reliance on written surveys of the community. We're doing little, if any, of that this time around. So there's community visioning workshops. There is focus groups that will be put together fairly early on in the, in the process before the plan is adopted, when it's in its draft form, there'll be a public open house. And then, of course, there's a couple of public hearings where the community can have input prior to asking the council to adopt the plan.
And there will be three joint meetings of the city council and Plan Commission to review this throughout the process.
Thank you. All public meetings.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number 32, please signify by saying ayes. Your name is called, know if you're opposed.
Alderman Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Crowe?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Peachey?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lars. On a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, thank you. We are adjourned. Good evening.